Chair calls the January 8th, 2019 meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you here tonight. I'd like to take the liberty of doing a special welcome to one of our fellow board members, Mr. Jeff Chance is with us tonight. And everybody give him a hand for being here.[42.12][42.12](APPLAUSE). He's here under due rest. We appreciate the effort.[50.12][50.12](LAUGHING). Next, I'd like to recognize Ms. Patty Crump to do our invocation and then her pledge.
Please bow your heads. As we gather for the first time in the new year, Father, we thank you for this chance to reset our agendas to match your plans. Recalibrate our intentions and refocus our hearts so that your will will be done. And let our decisions reflect your best plans. Lift our eyes to seek you first in all we do and give us renewed strength and godly courage to obey you without question. We ask for your continued blessings and for safety over all our students and staff. And thank you for sustaining us each day. Bless this meeting, Lord, all those present and all those who may be affected by any decisions made tonight. We ask all this in your holy name. Please stand.
(Clerk) Lord of the United States of America and of the Republic of which sustains one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Crump. Dr. James has some recognition here for the National Board of Teachers.
Yes, I'll ask Ms. Calvert and Mr. Poplin if they would join me at the front.
Chairman, pool, and members of the board, it brings me pleasure this evening to recognize a special group of educators. This group of educators have renewed their National Board certification. National Board certification was designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. It is the most respected professional certification available in K-12 education. These educators this evening renewed their certification. Upon original certification, your certification is good for 10 years, and then you have to go through a process again to renew your certification. So we're very proud of these folks this evening. As I call your name, I'd like you to come forward, please. Brian Cribb. Audrey Goodman. And Deborah Rels. Join me as we congratulate these folks.[258.64][258.64](APPLAUSE).
Next item on our agenda is academic accolades and I'll recognize Ms. Trouble, I mean Ms. Smith.[300.44][300.44](LAUGHING).
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. Please, I join you, please, Ms. Erin Hudson. It's an exciting night. I thank you all for the opportunity to be able to see the moment to tell you a little bit about Central. I see that looks there, so I'll make it quick.[314.33][314.33](LAUGHING).
It wasn't Derek Bush, though.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Melissa Smith, the principal at Central Elementary, and this is my assistant. She is not ashamed of me. She knows that I love her very, very much, and so we're just excited to be here on this evening. Well, I noticed that the seats are quite empty just for tonight, so I expect next time for it to be full when we present.
Okay, so first we'll begin. First of all, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity. It's wonderful to see you all and behold your faces on tonight. Academic accolades at Central Elementary. So what is happening at Central Elementary School? Is that the clicker?
It is.
All right, thank you. All right. Show me how. That's okay. I will do that. There we go. If you'll take a look at the screen here, Central houses 563 students, very diverse population, which we're proud of. Grades span anywhere between 79 students per grade level and 109 students per grade level. Okay, so next, school demographics. We'll post this on our website, so if you want to take a closer look, you're more than welcome. Also, this changes daily because we're very transient school. Oh, gosh, we met expected growth in reading. We're excited about that. Go ahead and click it. Okay, so thank you. We met massive growth, but we exceeded it, and we're at 89.3. We're really, really excited about the hard work that our staff has done. They're smiling. They're not ashamed. Okay. And we are a C-school, and we say that with pride, but I did want to highlight 2015, '16. I always remind the staff of the fact that we have been to the mountaintop before, so we know what that feels like. We have been plus 5.47, and our goal is to try to make it to the top again, so we can do it. Okay, and in science, we had a growth score of 65%, and we're growing. Okay, it says here that we have economically disadvantaged population, 60%. I'm going to turn it over to my assistant to talk to you a little bit about that.
Good afternoon. I'm going to turn this way because I want your attention tonight. We're doing great things at Central, and I've been so pleased and excited to be in front of y'all because you need to be in our school. You need to see what we're doing. Before I start, Mr. Chance, welcome back. We have prayed very hard in our household for you and have kept up with you through Mallory, so I'm glad you're back. You were missed. I love data. Numbers don't lie. That's what I've always said. One thing that I want you to be aware of is the percentage of economically disadvantaged free and reduced lunch is at 60.6%. When I look at that number, I don't look at my students' potential. We look at where they're growing. And if you look at the growth that we met, we far exceeded what our numbers said we were in terms of free and reduced lunch. So that's important to consider. Some of the things that we are doing this year to get back up the mountain, which is where we're headed, is an embedded intervention time. It's not just enough for us to say that we're going to pull some students here and there. Our school improvement team has been very intentional this year about planning scheduled, embedded interventions into our master schedule. What that looks like is daily intervention groups. That's no longer classroom teachers. That's all hands on deck. If you teach PE, you're teaching something. If you teach art, you're moving. If you teach, as a teacher assistant, you're moving. All hands on deck is our approach because we know everybody has a strength to offer every child. Again, one of the things that has been our true gem this year is RTS Store. That was afforded to us very graciously. We have staff members from RTS Store that come every week. They're helping us to remodel our PLCs. We have been so graciously awarded the opportunity to have that model at Central this year. They are helping us reformulate what MTSS looks like, what our ready data looks like, and how we analyze that, not just talk about it, but take data and then apply it to the big what's next or the so what. And then, again, Letterland embedded up to second grade. We like to see our family out and about. We are a family, and it is all hands on deck, so everybody has a part to play. Again, Letterland going into second grade, which has been very successful. We have seen that cohort of students that started in kindergarten now go through kindergarten first and into second grade, and it has been successful. We are very excited at Central. We're getting excited for middle-of-year M-class because we can't wait to see every student grow. And that data is looking very hopeful. Our teachers work hard, our students work hard, and we're working on taking the strategies that we're doing in-house, we call, and into the community. So we want our families to be just as excited.
Okay. And so you see why I love my partner. She has been just in a beautiful gym, a great addition to Central, and she's just as hard working and just as beautiful and as articulate as I am.[674.82][674.82](LAUGHING). Okay, so if you'll take a look here, and that's just my personality. It's who I am, okay? And you know this. So joint Title I and EL parent event, this is an opportunity for us to go out into the community and meet the parents or the families where they're at. Sometimes it just can't get there, so we host events. This particular event was Stanley County Public Library Night. Okay? So I want to, you have about 10 slides that show a three-year trend data which evidences a decline in office discipline referrals. And we categorize them in so many different ways. What we want you to notice is to your far right, everything 17, '18 school year last year went down when we implemented the PBIS model. And for some of you, it's a school-wide program where we teach behavioral expectations and we reward our students. Basically, what we're trying to do is create a climate where students appropriately behave, and that is a norm. So this is by number of students. This is by incidents. Notice the right, it's still going down. This is by ethnicity and gender. It's going down. This is by exceptional children subgroup. PBIS is working. By grade level incidents, look at that picture, would you? I'm telling you, we'll go where President Trump wouldn't make it out, so we got the next best thing, and that's Mr. Danny Poplin to come out. And we had to give him, before he left that scenario, a little bit of melatonin just to calm him down a little bit. But he was excited to see that those students were able to meet their goals with PBIS rewards. And our class dojo is like a media framework in which we communicate with parents, and also we let them know how the students are doing, either academically or behaviorally. So it's a wonderful program. There we go, more charts. And this is by grade level cohort incidents. This is by campus location. Where is it happening? Is it happening more in the gym? Is it in the classroom? Is it off school? Is it in the restroom? Why is all of this happening? Well, I tell you what, because of the staff's effort to do things in a concerted manner, I'm excited to say that we were awarded the 2017, '18 Green Ribbon School Award. The state even recognized us for our efforts. So many thanks to our staff and PBIS leadership team. So we're excited about that. It's your turn.
Thank you. So with that, we believe that you are not school-ready until your behavior's in line. We are not looking to call out negative behavior because every behavior is a behavior, positive or negative. Instead, we want to shape your behavior. We want to positively reinforce. And what our data showed was we need more for our community. And so with school improvement team, we had a lot, many teacher leaders come out and say, "I want to try this. I want to do this." And those "this" and "that's" are our social game club. It was amazing to look at the data and track specific behaviors to the students that actually signed up. And what was shown was it truly married with student needs because the students that were showing up on the behavior hit list, if you will, were the ones that were showing up. And it is proven that it's declining, the negative, non-preferred behaviors are declining. Again, garden club. And then we also believe that it's very important for our teachers to be learning. We understand that every teacher cannot go out of the building on a conference or a professional development. So we believe in fostering teacher leadership and growing our teachers in-house with their own professional developments.
Okay. And so we also tried to become one community and one voice. We teamed with our sister school, East Alabama, Maryland. We all went out to the EEY Dell Center the nights before school began, and we fed the parents, and the teachers got together, and they also socially networked with each other so that it's not a competing system, but rather a family system. We promote family in the city schools. There they are, feeding those folks. Okay. And our educational field trips, we believe in when you are going outside of the school and you're taking students somewhere, that it has purpose. It is aligned to the curriculum, and they had a wonderful time with that. Of course, I had to put my picture on there. I had a shimmering nice suit there. I just thought that was a nice picture for you to see. Okay, but just so you know, we have 563 students, and I would say more than half of them showed up. This is just one grade level, excuse me, two grade levels. That's something like kindergarten and first. I'm just throwing that out there to show you that they show up in volumes because when you feel success, you participate. Okay.
This Life Skills Lab, and this was a dream that has been being cultivated for the last several years. And we encourage, again, school improvement team, bring it, bring your ideas, and let's talk about it. Life Skills Lab is designed for students with special needs that are on general and adapted curriculum. And the purpose of the Life Skills Lab is to teach you skills that you will need as an adult. We're not looking at each student in the here and now, but who they could be as an adult. And so the Life Skills Lab came to life this year. In this lab, they're learning to cook, they're learning functional living skills, and they're learning job skills at an early age.
Our students collaborate throughout the school day. We preach efficacy. We believe in you, you believe in you. We can do this. We collaborate. As teachers, we expect our students to do the same. Together, we've got this. Look at those students, learn. Go, students. And then, of course, starting our school year out, we could not, you know, just leave this one out because this meant the world to us. County Office is very supportive of us, and we really appreciate that. I've never had a mean face at county office. I feel like I have friends there, and they understand me even in my awkwardness, and I thank you for that. And so we thank you also, Dr. James, for letting the students know that they can do it. I know how to do brownie points. Don't forget that.[1067.42][1067.42](LAUGHING). Okay, so I probably can't talk about this one. So will you do the honors?
Yeah.
And then we're going to end this.
I'm going to speak to both groups now. At Central, we call each other family. If you call up to a classroom, I'm going to say, "Friend, family, what's going on?" This year, we had to make some very difficult decisions per health issues with one of the staff members, family members. And immediately, the family came together, staff from the cafeteria, from the classrooms, from everywhere, and we said, "What can we do?" And we want to recognize that Central is only going to grow because we believe in community and we believe in family. It is a privilege to be able to serve at Central. I'm very thankful to this board for the opportunity to serve on this family and the county office for the support that you guys give. And at this time, we would like to recognize Ms. Allison Wisniewicz and Ms. Lee Vang. Ms. Lee Vang was unable to attend with us tonight, but we made the decision as a family to move teachers through grade levels. And they so graciously came and stepped up and said, "Whatever our family members need, we're going to do that to support our students because that matters." So Al, if you'll stand up, we'd like to recognize you.[1162.83][1162.83](APPLAUSE). And what I love about the transitions that we made, no student was in the dark about who Allison was or who Lee was. It was a very natural transition because we see each other all the time, including students and families. So over the holidays-
Christmas break.
-when we were calling, calling, calling families and home visiting families to ensure them that it was going to be okay, we made sure that the student was there because they said, "Oh, I know Ms. Wisniewicz. She's in second grade. We love her. I know Ms. Vang. We love her." We didn't miss a beat, and that's what matters for students. We are going to have adversities. We are going to have setbacks. And we drop back 10, and we punt, and we do it again. And that's what we do to win.
Yeah. We're 212. What does that mean? 211, water's hot, but 212 is boiling, baby, and we're boiling at Central. Thank you. Yeah, good job. Give me some.[1227.83][1227.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'll come by your school if you promise not to put me in timeout.[1240.00][1240.00](LAUGHING). Thank you much. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. You have copies in front of you, the December 4 regular scheduled meeting and also the December 12 special call meeting. Are there any additions or corrections, deletions, changes that need to be made to the minutes? Here in the minutes will stand approved as presented. Quick word here, we probably won't have any committee reports. Committees have not been meeting yet. Just a word to all the committee chairs, it's your discretion when you have your meetings. You've got the primary staff person listed. Just contact them, and you schedule your meetings as they're needed, and you're driving the train because what comes out of your committees is going to be the action the board has taken. So it's your discretion that you call the meetings. Just work with your staff people. With that, Mr. Chance, and we can just, no report, I'm sure. Okay. Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
No report.
Mr. Graves, finance.
No report.
Ms. Watson, personnel.
No report.
And Ms. Crump.
No report.
Dr. James, you have anything?
No report.
No report, okay. But we do have an audit report that leads right into that. And Dr. James, you want to introduce us?
Well, I'm glad to present Mike Wake from Anderson, Wake &amp; Smith. I'm sure I transposed them somehow. But Mike was the audit firm, Anderson, Smith &amp; Wake, and it was the audit firm we chose last year. I've known individuals in his agency for some time. I've found them to be very good in the area of school finance, and it was very beneficial in trying to help us locate a CFO during the transition period. So, Mr. Wake, I'll turn it over to you.
Before you start, just be aware of the fact, we haven't had this in our hand for a week or two to be studying through, so, but I'm feel sure that questions come up after you've gone, you'll be glad to entertain those if they-
Oh, exactly, exactly. Chairman, pool, members of the board, Dr. James, like I said, pleased to be here to present the audit report. This is for the year ending June 30, 2018. Hopefully, each of you have the bound report in front of you. I'm sort of going to go through and hit the highlights. If you don't, I'll tell you what page it's on and then try to make that informative regardless. I'll be very informal. If you have any questions, I know you haven't had it long, but if you have any questions that come up during my presentation, you know, please feel free to stop and ask me those questions. I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have. Or alternatively, you know, give me a call later on, it'll be fine. But within the report, on page one is probably the most important item in the report. That's our opinion letter. And I'm pleased to report that we issued an unmodified opinion, which is really commonly referred to as a clean audit report. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give on a set of financial statements as your independent CPAs. And we say unmodified, what that really means is there were no items that would cause us to modify the report, where we'd say everything was in accordance with the accounting standards except for this modification. So there were no modifications whatsoever. Then I'm going to skip over to the next section because it's a rather lengthy report. I don't want to stay here all night with everyone. I'm sure you don't either. But the next section is the management's discussion and analysis, and that's really just an overall summary of the statements prepared by management. Then if you go over to page 12, this is where you're going to see a balance sheet and an income statement, and these are the government-wide statements. And normally, I tell school boards not to really manage off of these statements because within the bound financial statements, there's two set of statements. One is the total government-wide statements, and one is on a fund basis that you're accustomed to, the general fund, your state fund, your federal fund. The government-wide statements include school buildings, all your assets, the schools, the land, real estate. You're not going to sell the schools to fund ongoing operations. That's why I say you really don't manage off of that. It's more relevant to counties and cities who are going to issue debt. But still, the reason I want to do focus and spend a little bit of time telling you about this statement is the largest change that I've seen on financial statements since I've been doing this, and this is about my 25th year now of auditing school boards. This year, we had to record a liability for OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. What that really is, is your retiree healthcare. And that liability that you had to record on your financial statements was about $114 million in total. That's why you'll see at the very bottom of page 12, if you have that open, you'll see a negative $76 million net position, and that's all because of the post-employment healthcare benefits. This is something throughout the state of North Carolina. Every school district that we audit has this. Every government agency has this. Just to give you a little bit of background, Charlotte Mecklen Wake, that adjustment was about $2 billion. So very big numbers. And how the calculations come up, just to give you a little bit more background so you know what's going on when you see that big negative number and that everyone's that way in the state. The calculation is you get the actuaries, and they come up with the liability of what they project future retirees to pay for healthcare costs. And you come up with this number, and that's your total liability. Then you back out your investments that you've got stored up to pay for those future liabilities, and it comes up with a net number. So in the healthcare, I mean, excuse me, the pension retirement that's recorded on the books, North Carolina is very proud that the retirement system's in really good shape on your pension payments. It's funded at about 90%. So what that means, if you've got $100 liability, you've got $90 in the bank to pay for it, so you've got a $10 net liability. The thing is, with the insurance, it's funded at 3%. So that means $100 liability, you've got $3 in the bank to pay for it, so your net liability's $97. That's why this adjustment was so large this year when this was booked. And taking it a step further, that's probably why the state ceased providing benefits, post-employment insurance benefits, to employees starting in 2021. Because the math just was not going to work out. If you kept providing those benefits to people, your contribution rate was going to keep growing and growing and growing. So in the end, sorry to spend so much time talking about something that you really can't control. Stanley County School Board, you were not asked what the contribution rate was going to be for the employees. You were not asked about the benefits that were going to be provided. It's just the accounting rules that require to book this, and again, everyone's seeing it throughout the state. Where it really is relevant is somebody like, if you recently heard about Chicago in the news, how much they were unfunded on their post-employment benefits. It was something, if I remember it right, 68 billion or something, just huge numbers. And they sell bonds to the public. So that's very relevant for those. So that's why the accounting standards require this to be booked, but again, you guys can't really do anything about it. You have to record a number that the state tells you to record. So does that confuse anyone, or hopefully maybe provide some insight on that? Because it is really the single biggest change we've seen on these statements in 25 years.
Just inject, obviously, the state's aware of the fact with the pension. They're trying to tinker with it now to come up with some solution to address it, but even as good a shape we're in, we're still shaky on the pension side in the state.
Yeah. Well, that's exactly right, but still, your 90% is way better than your 3%, though.[1714.42][1714.42](LAUGHING). That's right. The next thing I'm going to focus on, if we turn over to page 14, the good thing is, this is the balance sheet, and on page 15 is going to be your income statement. These are your traditional fund statements that you're used to seeing, and the good thing is nothing changed on those statements whatsoever. So the main thing I want to point out to you is going to be on page 15, and I'm looking at the general fund. It's going to be on your leftmost column. And if you look down at the bottom, the third number up, you're going to see you added $245,000 to fund balance within the general fund this year. Then I'm going to move over to the other special revenue fund, which is about four or five columns over. That's your other main fund that you can have fund balance in for your funding of instructional programs. You'll see that you added 700 fund balance to that. So I think that's something that the district can really be committed on in adding that fund balance, pushing $1 million this year. It was very, very tight going into last year, and I always tell people to try to build that fund balance up as much as you can because when you look at this statement I'm looking at right now on page 15, you're going to see the state public school fund, $54 million the district gets. You'll see the federal grants fund, $4.7 million. The thing is, you can carry no fund balance in state or federal. That's the law. They give you money, you have to expend it. If you don't spend it, they take it back. You use it or lose it. You get that money, and you spend- You, you use it or lose it, you get that money and you spend it. But the thing is, whenever the state comes in and they say, "We're gonna make you increase your retirement contribution from 18 to 18.5%," just throwing that out there. They may give you some money to pay for all of that, unlike your position allotments, but your dollar allotments, they're probably not gonna pay for that. The federal government, they don't care one bit what North Carolina says you're gonna put into retirement. They're not gonna give you a pay increase because of North Carolina saying you're gonna put more into, to, um, retirement. So in the end, where does that money come from? It comes from your general fund, or your other special revenue fund. So that's why you've gotta have that fund balance to pay for those type items, cause when you see something unexpected come up, you, if you don't have the money there, you gotta make cuts. It's just that simple on those items. But in the end, still, something that very, I mean, I think the district should be proud of increasing that fund balance, and, um, in my opinion, hopefully you can do the same next year going forward on that. Any questions on those instructional funds, on that? One thing I just wanted to mention briefly on the child nutrition program, you, um, lost a little bit of cash this year on that, but still, I would think that's sort of a minor amount that was lost, they were able to pay, um, indirect cost. So, um, if you can continue that trend, um, I think that would be something we, we definitely want to sustain. We see a lot of districts throughout the state against about all that I work on. And if you can at least just keep your head above water on child nutrition, you're doing a pretty good job there. So hopefully we can keep that going forward. Then the next thing, I'm gonna skip all the note disclosures and whatnot, skip over those items, cause that's really just providing additional support to items I just went over. I'm gonna go over to page 62, and this is where we get into the compliance section of our audit. And believe it or not, these last, um, gosh, 20 pages, they take equal amount of time as these first 60 pages take from us from an audit standpoint. Because this is where we're looking at the district's internal controls and your compliance. And we talk about internal controls, we're just talking about the district's internal procedures in legman's term to make sure that you've got procedures in place, that money's not walking out the door. That if something bad happens, we're gonna catch it, and we're gonna deter anything happening based on our policies and procedures. And we spend a lot of time testing those. There's three opinions that we've got on the, the internal control and compliance. One on the overall internal control and compliance of the district as a whole. One is it relates specifically to state money, money that comes from Raleigh to Stanley County schools. And then one specifically as it relates to federal money. That federal money normally goes from Washington to Raleigh to Stanley County schools. All three of those reports are unmodified reports, um, clean opinions on those, so pleased to report that. You can have a clean report and still have what we call a financial statement finding. That would be isolated cases of non-compliance or internal control items. And we did note, um, three findings that I'll discuss with you at this time on those. On page 70 is gonna be the first one that we, we noticed. That is on your bank reconciliations. During the, the course of the year, the bank reconciliations were not performed in a timely manner. I think a lot of that relates to maybe some delays that were carrying over from the previous year even. And it, they just didn't get called up in a timely manner on that. The good thing is, whenever we were out doing the audit procedures, they were called up at 6:30, and from my communications with management subsequent to that date, I think they are called up right now. So it's something that I think has cleared itself up. But going forward, making sure you get those bank recs done in a timely manner is probably the single most important internal control that a district can have. Because if you, if you don't have it reconciled, it's just like not reconciling your own personal checkbook. If you don't have it reconciled, then how do you know when you go to the ATM to get some money out, if you've got money in there or not? So you've gotta just make sure you keep that reconciled. The next item I noted, this is gonna be on page 71. This is with your, um, the FSA flexible spending account. And this is an account, um, like I went to the dentist this morning, and I'll get my bill, and I'll take that and we'll submit it for reimbursement later on, where we put money in our paycheck to, to get those monies back. In auditing those accounts, we noticed that certain people were getting benefits of the flexible spending account, and were not contributing to the account. And you may say that's sort of hard to do when you've got someone administering the plan, but you get an outside organization administering the plan, and they're administering it off of who they're told is being covered. This outside organization, they don't really care if, if Stanley County Schools is actually withholding money from the person's paycheck or not, they're paying benefits out to who they've been told to pay benefits out to. So in the end, there wasn't reconciliation of who's actually having monies withheld from their checks compared to who has been told that the administrator is having money withheld. And it looked like there was probably about $20,000 of short reimbursements, short withholdings that should've been withheld from the employees going into the plan to pay for those benefits. Again, the good thing is, after us identifying this, I think, um, we've been communicated to us that procedures are now in place to make sure that doesn't happen again going forward. And that would begin, again, to us, is the main thing is, if you do notice something, to correct it as soon as you find it going forward. Any questions on that? The next one on page 72, this is an item that we are required by law to report. There were, um, certain instances in certain funds where amounts were spent in excess of what was approved by, by you, the governing board. In the end, on these items, we did not notice anything that we think anyone intentionally spent more than what the board had intended to be spent. It was more, I think, of items being spent, but the amendments not being taken to the board in a timely manner to get those approved. It wasn't anything that we see of grave concern, where we think folks were trying to circumvent any certain requirement or procedure on those items.
If I could ask a quick question about that? Um, are there supporting documents, um, that, that back this up? Do you have an estimate of how much money that was?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There, it's actually in the statements, I can, you've got a copy there with you right now?
Yep.
Okay. Turn it over to page 17. And what you'll see under, um, the instructional services, regular instructional. If you look over on the far right column, you're gonna see $252,000 over spent in that line item. And then if you go down, you'll see $856. And then on down a little bit further, there's $5,875. To me, it really sort of ties in a little bit to the bank recs being a little bit behind. So you, you don't really know exactly when you need to get these amendments passed if the bank rec hadn't been done timely. But when I say that, I didn't really notice anything that caused grave concern from us as auditors. If you look at the total expenditures, you were still under budget by $242 for the total expenditures. That's why to me it was more so, without getting in extreme detail, and we didn't, you know, we don't, we test samples of transactions, we don't look at every single transaction. But without going in extreme detail, it looks to me like there could've been amendments to move it from certain line items to the other, to cover those items, but still in total, you were in good shape. Does that help at all?
It, it does help. It's, it's just with the title like budgeting, budgeting can mean 20 different things when it comes to accounting. So, I wanted to make sure that that was, um, that was not a lack of being able to forecast, it was rather just a consequence of processes being followed and, and not necessarily, um...
I think that's...
There aren't, there aren't, there are things that accrue over time. Like you said, with money being moved from one account to another account. Um, and, and so it's, it's, um, it's probably not an uncommon occurrence in that type of event.
That's probably true, but the one thing I will go back to when you said is an era, area of oversight, probably with the, the account, the bank accounts not being reconciled, and not having a clear standing as to where you exactly know you're at, at each month. So there, there was probably some, a lack of oversight in that regard. But when I say that there wasn't maybe a lack of oversight, would be, um, sometimes we will, if we're auditing, we've got one district we're looking at right now, that is borderline fraudulent. There was intent as to why they spent items more so than the budget. I didn't see anything that we would say that went that direction. It was more just the timely recording and taking it to the board for approval.
Sure, so, so it was an issue of oversight, that was a consequence of bank reconciliations, which as of 6:30, we believe were taken care of.
That's true.
And so we should not have that problem in the future, okay.
And there may be other contributing factors, that's, that's one item.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. Then, in addition to the, um, the financial statements, you will have, um, some separate reports. One is just a one-page management letter. These are items that we are required to report to the governing board. That would be, um, to be honest, somewhat insignificant, smaller of the nature. It wouldn't be a finding that we would show in the statements, but still something that management and the board should be made aware of and take, um, steps for going forward. On this item, we noticed that the cafeteria managers' timesheets were actually being approved by the cafeteria manager. So, you know, just saying that, obviously, probably should be approved by somebody other than the person doing the work. So, I think that's been taken care of. And then, at one of the schools, um, the individual schools in our testing, we noticed, um, a higher nor, number than what we would normally expect to see of invoices paid without the appropriate supporting documentation for that item. So that would be something else that, um, that we would take the district to look into that and make sure that, that we address that going forward with your, your own internal auditor on those items. Then finally, there's a, um, a three-page document, and this is a required communications letter. And this is, um, just like it says, it's a document of items we are required to communicate to you as your independent CPAs. This came around with the Enron collapse, to be honest. Um, all the years before that, accountants were never required to communicate items to the governing board, which in hindsight, that makes no common sense whatsoever, but it took, took that big collapse to make Congress step in and require it. But in the end, the bulk of this is boilerplate, I'm not gonna go over it. It discusses the new, um, OPEB changes that we discussed earlier. To me, the, the main thing that I always talk to the boards about, there's one section on the second page that talks about, um, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And, and really, it's just a one-sentence item, but we talk to the people at the individual schools, the different department heads, everyone in accounting, obviously, your, um, human relations, um, department, resources department. Um, the main thing is that we feel that we get full access to anything that we're looking for. When we ask for a question, that we're not turned away, that we can't have access to the information. And secondly, that we get the information timely. Um, if I ask for a document that they should have prepared, and that should take five minutes to give it to me, if it takes two weeks to get it to me, you know, clear that makes us wanna dig in and wanna know what's going on. If we do notice any items, like the findings that we noticed in the, the internal control items we've discussed, we communicate that to management. Does management have an open ear, listen to that, and take the approach? What can we do to make it better and get this right going forward? And, um, that's the important thing from our standpoint. We got, we received full cooperation, I think we had full access to any information in a timely manner. And any of the items that we've identified, I think management took, um, you know, the appropriate steps to remedy those going forward. And in the end, that concludes what I was gonna go over, unless anyone has any questions for me whatsoever.
Any board members have any questions or comments? If not, thank you much for your presentation.
If you have any questions, just get up with me. But thank you.
Dr. James, uh, you wanna introduce the next person?
I wanna ask Sean Britt to come up, and as he's coming, um, E-Rate funds provide broadband services throughout our nation. And if there's anything I guess we can be proud of as a country, that our federal government has done a significant amount of funding to make sure broadband is through rural counties and covered throughout, uh, our nation. In that process, uh, our school systems could not afford, without E-Rate from the federal government, the connectivity that we have. So again, um, as most of us do, we're involved politically, make sure that your congressmen and senators know that we're appreciative of that money. It's been an ongoing endeavor for the federal government. We have made inroads greatly throughout the rural counties in this state. The next step of that, of course, is to make sure accessibility goes to residential, and that, uh, that will cost a lot more money than we've expended so far as a country. But, uh, proud to announce that here in Stanley County, we do have several service providers, and, uh, we have to do a competitive bid, and Sean will go into that. But it's a quite lengthy process and very detailed and in-depth, and I do appreciate those people that served on that committee. All that is documented and is a federal process that we go through typically about over three years. So Sean's gonna show you on our 2020 plan for technology, how the E-Rate funds are being spent, and how they fit in, and what we're going to do with the, the rate funding we're requesting in this bid process.
Thank you, Dr. James. Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, last year I had spoken to you guys about our technology plan, kinda renewing what we had started 10 years ago. We needed a lot of upgrades that were long overdue, which our team worked together to comprise what we call our Vision 2020, in the hopes by the end of school year 2020, we will have met a lot of our goals. Uh, much of those goals, just a quick refreshing, uh, we have already started to implement it, if not fully implemented. Uh, if you've been to the elementary schools, you've probably seen some of the new touchscreen panels. Uh, it's our hope to continue that project into the middle and high schools. And next year, in the, uh, year three as well, uh, it is one of our top priorities. Teacher devices, we gave, uh, we refreshed a lot of our teacher devices, uh, with more mobile devices at all levels, uh, giving each teacher either a Chromebook or an iPad of sorts. That gives them some flexibility of, uh, um, accessing. We also renegotiated some contracts, uh, in order to save money on our copiers, plus we got new copiers in most of our buildings, uh, in all of our buildings, actually. Uh, we renegotiated a phone contract that, uh, came about with, uh, significant savings. One thing that did happen that we had to do, that, uh, E-Rate used to fund a lot of our phone connections, and they had phased that out. So it was something we definitely had to, uh, reconsider. And we actually were able to purchase our equipment, and, uh, it, right now, comes at a very minimal cost to us to operate our phone lines. So, that was something we had worked on last year. Continuing on into next year, uh, workstations for a lot of our users are, uh, we're looking at, like our cafeteria staff, those type people who, uh, need some more updated equipment. Uh, and continuing our one-to-one program, uh, we also began to implement a lot of our security systems. If you've been to our schools, you've seen a lot of cameras going up. Uh, I started this week putting in a new system called Lobby Guard. So, you'll probably be entering some buildings. If you don't have a badge on, they'll probably ask you to get a visitor, uh, badge. So if you've been to some other surrounding counties, you may have, uh, interacted with that before. So, we're palleting that, palleting that program right now at Alamo and a few other schools, and hope to expand that throughout the year. And, uh, as a five-year goal is to begin, if you heard a lot of talk about the cloud, is to migrate a lot of our systems. We, we've got a great many of them all, there already, but it's our hope to, uh, within a five years to become as much as possible cloud-integrated. So, all of that works and, or is able to work on an extensive network system. And there's two parts that we look at. There's what we call a wide-area network that connects all of our schools, uh, to the internet, to a network infrastructure. And then when you get into the schools, you have what we call a wireless internet, where a lot of our devices, almost probably 75, 80% of them, connect wirelessly, which was something that wasn't the case 10 years ago. So in order to be able to do that, as Dr. James alluded to, we have to, uh, depend on outside funding, uh, particularly through a special program called E-Rate, that is sponsored, uh, through a, what is called the Universal Service Administrative, Administrative Company, also known as USAC. And what they do is they provide funding for what we call Category 1, which is our network connections, which is our wide-area network, and Category 2. So we've set out this year to, um, seek bids and to upgrade each of those systems. Uh, one of the categories, particularly we just finished up, was our Category 1, our wide-area network. Our goal was to go from a 1-gig connection to a 10-gig connection. We also, uh, put on our bid, um, our request to be able to have an expandable network for future demand as we move to the cloud integration, uh, to have a point-to-point connection. In other words, everything comes back to our data center and connects straight into our school. And also to have what we call network redundancy. In case we have a system that failed, we have one to back it up and to continue that connection. And we're also right now finishing up our Category 2. We're looking to buy the connections within the wireless environment to make the 10-gig connection, to handle, again, new demand of equipment, replace older access points. Access points are what you connect to, you may have one in your house that you connect to as well. We have one in every classroom, some of it dated, and we need to upgrade those through the Category 2 funding that E-Rate provides. And then also replace some more dated equipment. So, we began that process, again, as I said, E-Rate provides 80% of the funding, and North Carolina has a special arrangement where they pick up the tab on 20% of the cost that the feds do not cover. So for us, uh, we're able to build a very extensive network, and we have been and continue to do so uh, through complete funding through this program, which is something most districts could not do because of the cost of this type of equipment. Uh, but they have certain criteria in place. They make sure that when you go through the process, as Dr. James began to explain, that, uh, you do a fairly extensive bidding process, what is called a 470. We just finished that 470 process this past December. In our Category 1, we will finish it up for our Category 2, which is our net wireless equipment in the coming weeks. And, um, in doing so, we had select, we had received seven bids from five vendors. The committee of six met, reviewed each bid, uh, and we laid out a rubric, and you can see what that rubric... what that rubric looks at. Cost being the most important factor, we still have to be mindful of the cost of what we're getting, but also there's other criteria that we take in consideration. Once that was determined, the committee turned in what their rubrics were. We based it on an average, and Contara Networks was the winning vendor for a five-year agreement. The project, what they will begin to do is lay new fiber throughout the county that is 10-gig compatible, up to 100-gig, actually, which is quite extensive. They will begin at the end of January, and as our hope, all things that go well, by July 1, 2019, this coming July 1, we will switch over to our new provider. So that is, as quick as I can sum it up, I just wanted to kind of put you aware of what we have done and what we continue to do within our technology department.
Does the board need to approve the contract?
I'm not sure, because it is 100% funded through a federal program.
Move point then.
Okay, all right.
We're getting, we're getting the money, we don't have to approve it.
No, sir. All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Britt.
I had a, I had a quick question. So did I hear you correctly saying that the feds are funding 80%?
Yes.
And you said that the state was funding 20% of what the federal government was? So that basically, that is the, the entire 100%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 80% federal, 20% state?
Yep.
Okay, and was, Category 1, you said that that's totally complete, all those items?
The bids, yeah, the bidding has been done, the selection committee has made their determination.
And that was Contara?
That was Contara, yes, sir.
And is a five-year contract mandated as part of that program?
It was one thing, we sought a five-year agreement because of the cost.
Right.
You get a reduction in cost. And actually, we also asked the vendors to provide, if we opt to, at the same price point, an additional two-year extension beyond that, which if, you know, if, based on the way things go, we can opt into that at that same cost, which would be beneficial for us as well.
And my last question was, you mentioned on one of the first slides, one of the items was updating some of the, I think it was Chromebooks or something for the teachers. You said that, you use the word "some" were updated. Were all of them updated?
Yeah, all the middle and high school teachers had received one. Last year, we had provided all of our teachers that were doing M-class with a Chrome device. The state came back this year and provided those same teachers without iPads. So the teachers that were doing M-class this year that had Chromebooks got iPads as their mobile device, and the ones we had additional from last year, the Chromebooks, could be then dispersed. So from, from my understanding, every teacher from K through 12 has a new, from either this year or last year, a new either Chromebook or iPad.
That's what I was curious about, thanks.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I'm curious about the other four vendors. Who were they?
They were Windstream, Spectrum Enterprises, Wanrack, and Sharpa, I think it was. There was two outside vendors that submitted at the last minute from, I think, Kansas, and that was one of them, Sharpa, I believe it was. Okay.
Ms. Britt?
Yes, sir.
Any type of early-out clause and/or penalty say we're not satisfied with their services once or never?
There are, there will be, once they send me over, we have not signed the agreement as of yet. Once they send that, the, I'll have our lawyers to review over. And as always, I think our standard procedures are to have those clauses, also budgetary clauses, you know, if E-rate were to change the funding for that, then obviously, that would be something in consideration. Fortunately, we have a consultant, an E-rate consultant, that handles a lot of that for us as well, because it is very, is a complex system. And I depend on that consultant quite a bit to make sure we've got that all lined up correctly. Good question.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Is, is this entirely, is this system dedicated for the school system? Nobody else is piggybacking off of the, the, the infrastructure that's being put down?
My understanding, this, this is for the school system now. When new vendors do lay fiber, I would assume that they could lay other fiber in the ground at the time, but in terms of what we're, our connection is a straight connection only to the schools at that time, yes.
So this piggybacks on, on what Mr. Chance mentioned, because if they are laying this down, we, there has to be some type of stipulation in the contract that there's minimum performance standards that they have to maintain, because my only concern would be if, if that isn't dedicated specifically for us, then regardless of the cost, because they may do it cheaper for us, think they're going to be able to, to hook businesses up.
One thing about Contara's bid that kind of stood out as well, was they laid out all that, their performance, their uptime, their response times, and the repercussions of what would happen if it wasn't, if they didn't adhere to that times.
Okay, there are none, thanks.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Britt. Mr. Danny Poplin? Ms. Calvert?
I'd like to call your attention to the updated personnel agenda. As always, Section 1 is for your information, requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Move approval of Section 2?
We have a motion for Mr. McIntyre to approve Section 2. Do we have a second?
Second.
No, have a second. Any discussion or questions for Ms. Calvert? Here are none. All those in favor signify and say an aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Dr. James, you're handling auxiliary services?
Auxiliary services, actually, in your approval tonight, would be the approval of Ms. Georgia Harvey as her chief financial officer. So I'd like to welcome her on board and asking her if she has anything she needs to report out under auxiliary services. About this time, thank you.
Okay, public comments? We have no one signed up for public comments, so we will move on to superintendent's comments.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Central Elementary School for the great academic accolades, and I think we got a little performance in there, too. So I see a movie star coming up in the future. So keep it up, a lot of great work going on at Central, so I appreciate the hard work from both you and Erica. Also, the teachers that renewed their national boards, for the general public, I'm, I'm sure they don't understand the time and effort that's put into renewing a national board certification. That is the pinnacle of a teacher. When you have received your national boards, their, their standards are set to say they are no better teacher than you at that time, when you receive those boards and you continue down that journey to renew them. So again, that is a great accolade to have. I would say it's similar to earning your CPA or your bar exam. So it's very difficult, it takes a lot of rigorous work, so I appreciate those teachers going the extra mile. I would say that North Carolina is in the forefront of the nation with national board-certified teachers. I'm sure there's many reasons for that. One, one thing would be the 12% that it adds to your paycheck. So congratulations for those teachers that received that tonight. Also, thank you, Sean, for the hard work put in on E-rate. I know that one of the biggest things here in the county is trying to instill a better broadband structure, and that's very important to economic development also, along with the school system. Contara, I've run across them in other districts, and they do lay several hundred pair of fiber in there dedicating, I believe, a certain number of those fibers strictly to us. We do piggyback on MCNC, which is a tap-on we do for school systems, and I know the FCC's been working for years to see if we can actually have business add on to that to try to even drop broadband costs further, but so far, the FCC has not approved that. But again, exciting for the county that we can expand broadband services, so appreciate the hard work your team done on that. It's not an easy process. So I would like to thank all the teachers for getting a good start back to school from the break, and look forward to finishing out the year with great things coming forward for the, the board to listen to as we present academic accolades, and for our system as a whole to show some of the great things that are going on. I have had the opportunity this week to start back with the quarterly student advisory groups, and I will tell you, it's probably the most positive students have been, I think, Mr. Poplin and Ms. Calvert joined me on those trips, and actually, I got Hope to join us today. So I enjoy getting out with the kids and love the middle school kids, they're funny. So I had fun at Jennifer School today, but the kids, kids are enlightening. Actually, I nicknamed one of them Ms. Sassy. So she asked me to make sure I brought doughnuts, since she provided me cookies on my first visit, so I took them doughnuts. So I owe South Stanley Middle School doughnuts, Chris, next visit, so the students want to remind me. But appreciate all the hard work our students are doing, and I would just encourage the principals, there's good things going on in your buildings. I've heard nothing but positive from kids today, both from the high school to the middle school level, so thank you again for all your hard work.
Mr. Graves, we'll just start with you and come this way.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. I wanted to see if I had a, an email here from one of our principals, Kelly Dumbrowski from Ogpro STEM School. Is she still around? Oh, she is, she's in the back. They've been doing some exciting things, and I just wanted to mention that they have a virtual reality ribbon cutting coming up, and I'm not sure if that information's going to be on the, the school board website or on their website, but that should be exciting. I'm looking forward to attending that. I've been watching the program expand, the STEM program at Ogpro STEM Choice Elementary School, and I'm pretty excited about what I'm seeing. I wanted to start off by also welcoming Mr. Jeff Chance here to the board. We're, we're very thankful. I, I don't think it's, would be inaccurate to say, it's probably a miracle that he's here, because I know he received a lot of prayers. I'm not surprised because of the amount of prayers that he got, but we're certainly happy to see you here, and, and you're looking great, so welcome to the board. Okay. A few other people I wanted to recognize. I wanted to congratulate Georgia Harvey as, as our new CFO. We're, we're excited, and I thought that the report that we, that we heard tonight, the presentation from Anderson Smith and Wick, was outstanding. I think that everyone in the community should be heartened to know that the audit turned out like it did, and as they had mentioned, that basically, any issues that the school system, any major issues, if you want to call them major issues, the school system led, had last year with regard to finances, should have been taken care of as of last June. So that is a very, very good thing, and as the presenter noted, our fund balance went from a very small amount to, I believe it's about $1.2 million right now. And that's not money that's necessarily going to sit there for long, but it is important that we have those funds there. So I was very impressed with that presentation, and I look forward to working with Georgia in her new role. I also wanted to thank Sean for his presentation. That was very informative, and it's exciting, because as Dr. James pointed out, broadband is a hot topic around the county, especially when it comes to economic development. Most people don't realize the important impact that it can have on the school system. So it's good to know that we're out front in that. So we definitely thank you and your committee for all the hard work that you put in on that front. I want to also congratulate the national board teachers. I know, like Dr. James said, it is a huge honor and a lot of time and effort goes into it, that people in the community, and even parents, don't realize how much dedication it takes to receive that. So I want to congratulate them. And last, but certainly not least, I want to congratulate Central Elementary on their outstanding performance and that excellent presentation tonight. They have a special place in my heart, and all I will say is that I am not surprised by any of the information that you shared. We have come to expect big things from Central, and I know that you guys will never let us down, so thank you very much for that. Thank you.
I too, I know. I too want to thank you so much, Central Elementary, for coming and telling us about all the good things going on there. I'm looking forward to visiting you this month. I have that on my calendar, and I want to come, and I want you to show me the Life Skills Lab. I think that's very interesting. And congratulations on state recognition for getting the green ribbon for positive behavior intervention. I used to be in the classroom, too, and I know how important positive behavior intervention is. I mean, it's, I think it's the lifeline of bringing out the best in our children. So thank you for that. And I also would like to just say that it, it feels really good to be sitting here this time, this year, and to hear that, and to know that our fund balance is at $1 million. That's, feels, that feels really good. Hearing the clean audit report is a testimony to this community of what's been going on behind the closed doors here, under the leadership of Dr. James. When we hired Dr. James, he said he was going to turn that around, and he was going to do it with the team. And so we've had a, a lot of strong workers working on the finances here. We've had consultants in Dr. James' vision, and we are in a much better place, and we're only going up, so that feels great. Mr. Britt, thank you. Your Vision 2020, I remember sitting back here in the room and looking at the vision, and to see that it's almost complete now is exciting, and so I'm ready for the next vision, Vision 2022. But thank you very, very much. And then last, and certainly not least, we're all sporting these Brave Bren bracelets. If you haven't heard, there is a teacher, Kelly Andrew, who has a child who is battling cancer right now, and a very young child. I don't know Kelly Andrew personally, but I've read about her on Facebook, I'm following her story, and I'm praying for, and if you are a prayer warrior, please make sure you remember Ms. Bren.
All right. First off, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Again, congrats to those who are recognized for their national board certification renewals. Thank you to Central Elementary, not just Ms. Smith, but for all the teachers that I saw that came out tonight. That was great to see so many of your staff come and join you, and your presentation was wonderful. To Anderson Smith and White, great, this great audit report, and just thank you for coming out and presenting with, to all the details of that to us. Trying to review it was a little overwhelming, but the breakdown made it sound pretty simple. Also, congrats to Ms. Georgia Harvey. I know you're excited, and we're excited for all the things that you have in store and all the skills that you bring to the position. And also, thank you to Sean Britt for presenting to us tonight. And welcome, Jeff, to the board. We're glad to have you here, and also kind of thanks in advance to Dr. James and his team as weather-wise, I know this is your favorite time of year. So, yeah. So I know you're ready for it.
Ms. Watson?
I would like to also say thank you to Central. I met Ms. Smith when she was at Alamoa High School, this has been years ago, and just a wonderful lady, a great principal. We thank you for what you're doing at Central and also your assistant. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Britt, for all you've done. You're always out there finding something for us, and we thank you for that. Congratulations to all the national board teachers. I know that's a hard thing to do, and it's hard for your family, but it's something good for our system, and we thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Harvey. We're glad to have you on board as our CFO. And Marty Ingram, we're glad to have you as assistant, assistant. I can't even think now. I've known Marty for a long time, and he's a good, good person, so we're glad to have you. And most of all, we're glad to have Jeff with us. I know it's been hard for him and his family, and I've prayed really hard for him, and it makes me sad to think that, you know, things were not good for him at some times, but you know, sometimes you just have to pray really, really hard, so we've done that. And it's good to have all the principals here. It's nice to see your faces, it's nice to know that you're looking after our children and doing the best thing you can for them, and hope this next end of year is going to be really, really good for our system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Mr. Chance?
Without renaming everyone, I would piggyback off of the comments of most of the board members tonight, and... members tonight, and congratulating those who have accomplished your goals and recertified and what have you. Also, again, recognize Ms. Harvey for her role and position, newly-appointed Chief Financial Officer, and look forward to working with her. And certainly, last, but again, not least, as has been previously said, I thank each and everyone for the prayers, the phone calls, the cards, and the concerns sent my way, and most of all, for my wife. I may have been the sick one, but I think she struggled more than I did. They kept me sedated, so I didn't know most of it. But honestly, there were a couple of days when she was told, "Don't go home. We don't think he's going to make it through the night." Again, I don't remember any of those times, and I think that's God's way and the body's way of saying, "You don't need to." But I appreciate everything that's been done on my behalf, and certainly, the prayers have been sent up, and I appreciate very much all those who bowed their head and closed their eyes and lifted me up in prayer. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chance. Ms. Gibson, you getting bat cleanup?
Okay, I'm batting cleanup. Thank you always for the administrators that are here and the central office staff, teachers, and others. I appreciate you always being here. Congratulations to those national board renewal recipients tonight. It's awesome. Ms. Smith, keep boiling that water. I love it. Thank you for all you do there and your teachers. Mr. Sean Britt, thank you for carrying out, carrying through with the Vision 2020. I'm up for renewal credit. I need to be talking to you. I think I have to have some digital training. I'm going to be knocking on your door. Congratulations, Ms. Harvey and Mr. Marty Ingram. Wish you all the best. So glad to have you. Jeff Chance, lots and lots of prayers, and yes, lots and lots of messaging with your wife, Sandra. Yes, lots and lots of messaging. I know that Ms. Crump mentioned a little girl with cancer, and for us to keep her in our prayers. I have someone that is a relative of mine, and she is a student at West Stanley Middle School, Ms. Jennifer Honeycutt. I appreciate you beyond words for the support that you have given the family. The little girl's Madison McCray, and her mother, Renee, just sent me a message right before the board meeting. I asked her if I could share. Madison has a very rare, well, to make a long story short somewhat, right the Christmas holidays, Madison was taken and ended up with two surgery, two brain surgeries for a tumor. And she's had, well, just you can imagine, what the ordeal has been, and lots of, lots of pain and lots of headaches. But Madison has a very rare form of a tumor. There are only 34 of this kind in the world. It is a grade three, which is cancer. So they're going to treat her with six weeks of radiation, Monday through Friday, daily. She's trying to be positive. She's very, very tired. So just remember them in your prayers. It's a living testimony here. Prayers, prayers work, and God hears our prayers. So, but thank you, Ms. Jennifer Honeycutt. Mandy Dryefford for everything, because that family has really told me how supportive you have been for that child. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. I'll just ditto everyone covered. Congratulations really well tonight. Want to mention one thing. We have, this is going to be a busy month for the board. We have, I think, three dates scheduled later in the month. One of them is our work session, and one of them is two imposed sessions on us from outside, but that's okay. For the work session, I need you, all of you as board members, I try, I've got to get with Mr. Britt and get him to show me how to send out an email to the rest of the board. I thought I had it down pat one time, but I was not able to get this out. I wanted to get this out before this meeting, so you could bring some things in. But you need to come up with at least three items that you'd like the board to look at in our work session, and you can put more than three, but please put your top three priority ones at the top, because we'll try to blend them all together, and, you know, some of us probably have some of the same items. But if you will, at least three items that you'd like the board to take up in our work session. And we need to get this in fairly quickly, so the staff will have time. And if you would decide the item, if there's some information that you're looking for in particular, if you would annotate that, and that would help the staff provide what you need without jumping through a bunch of hoops. And if you will get that back to Mr. McIntyre, send that, either call him or send him a message, email, text, or whatever, to Mr. McIntyre here. He's going to be compiling the list and getting it ready for the work session. Another thing about, I think Oakboro has mentioned, I think they had a gala planned for this Saturday, which has been canceled. Is that correct?
The 6th of April.
I think the 19th of April. Oh, that's right. It's been moved to April. I think that's due to the weather coming up. I'm getting old, and I really don't care what people think much anymore, and I don't pay much attention to what people tell me I can or can't do anymore. And so I'm going to do something here that's highly out of order, I guess, but I'm not going to apologize for it. We got this band that Ms. Crump brought in for us tonight. You know, lots of times in life, we tell people, "We'll pray for you. We'll pray for you," and we go on. What we need to do is stop right then and pray for the person, right then. That's when the need and the hurt is. And if you'll bear with me and just bow for a moment, we've got a miracle sitting at the table with us, and I believe God can perform another miracle. And I'll just share this right quickly. Mr. Chance and I were talking outside here on early voting, and I just told him a while ago, you never know how quick life can turn on you. And, but God's able to do a lot of things that we can't do in this life. If you'd bow with me for just a moment. Father, we thank you for your love and mercy, and we thank you for your power and your grace and concerning care for all of us. We just lift this little child up to you, Lord. Your mighty hand might perform its miracle. We just also lift up our family, Lord, to give them strength and encouragement for the journey. We trust that you to handle this, and we'll leave it in your hands, in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you very much for that. If you would, we will have our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Don't forget, we've got three coming up towards the end of the month, or later in the month. But our next regular scheduled meeting will be February 5th, here back in the Commons Room. We will entertain a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters under North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A6, student matters, North Carolina General Statutes 143318.111A1, and attorney-client matters, North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A3.
Move to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session under appropriate statutes. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hear none. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Please take a five-minute break in route. Call the open session back to order. Mr. McIntyre, you have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the termination of a custodian as recommended by the superintendent.
Motion is to approve the termination of a custodian as recommended by superintendent. Do we have any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.